You got four panels. So you take one out and you push it over, now it's off to the center.
Yes, I hear what you're saying, but the strike will still go on, so and the fire truck's just gonna...
Yeah, it just doesn't have to go as much.
Well, depending on what direction you're going.
It shouldn't matter.
It's probably you gotta replace all of them, they don't have to be centered. The strike needs to be centered, but the, but the gap doesn't, or the cushion doesn't.
But if they might line up, it might be able to just move them to center still, because the holes are already there. If the holes still line up, you know, you just move them like a half of, take them up and then haul like half of one over.
It's just more work, but yeah.
Yeah. Trying to picture it very, very symmetrical. But if we start on power, we could just...
The sooner the better, so that we can confirm this for Saturday. Because they're, I think they're gonna finish paving tomorrow.
I, I do that one too.
Yeah, that was scary.
Ready? This time we'll call to order the meeting of November twenty first, twenty twenty two. Councilmember Burns will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Resendez.
Here.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
And Mayor Velazquez.
Here.
The agenda for the City Council of the City of Hollister regular meeting of November twenty first, twenty twenty two was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on November sixteenth at three o'clock P M. per government code section fifty four nine five four point two. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you want to report out from closed session?
Nothing to report, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. We're gonna now move to the consent agenda. Are there any items Council like to pull? Do we have any from the public?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We'll now move to public input. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you are joining us by Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining us by Zoom using a cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor Velazquez, we do not have any speaker cards, nor is there anyone online to speak.
Thank you. We're gonna now move to item D one, City Manager's report.
Nothing at this time.
We'll get item D two.
Yes, your, the H R department went to the annual Calpella H R training that was done in Monterey this last week.
Thank you. We're gonna now move to item F one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. F one is ordinance number one, two, two, three. An ordinance to the City of Hollister, of the City of Hollister adding chapter nine point zero nine to the title nine Public Peace Morals and Welfare of the Hollister Municipal Code related to the use and trespassing upon city parking lots and garages. Recommendation is the staff recommends City Council read by title only, waive full reading, and introduce this ordinance amending chapter nine point zero nine use and trespassing upon city parking lots and garages, adding requirements penalties for violations. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor Velazquez, I do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some, some moved, Mayor. What I'd like to recommend would be that read by title only, waive full reading, and introduce the ordinance amending chapter nine dot zero nine use and trespassing upon city parking lots and garages, adding requirements penalties for the violation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll now move to item F two.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you. This ordinance is amending chapter fifteen point six four of the City Hollister Building Code adopting the California building standards, the Fire Code amendments. And we're actually adding it to the municipal code on this part right here.
Thank you.
The only thing I do ask is if we do, we amend appendix Q one oh three on roadway engineering, because on that portion, this was made in conjunction with Monterey County and Santa Cruz County and us. It has the wording Monterey County, and we just need to change it to Hollister City Code.
Okay, is there any questions from Council?
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Charlie, can you confirm, I thought you said fifteen point six four, and just for clarity, the, the agenda says fifteen point zero four, so it's fifteen point zero four?
It's probably my bad eyes, I'm sorry.
No, I understand. So it is fifteen point zero four?
Yeah.
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there any speaker cards?
Mayor Velazquez, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
The changes of Q one oh three to the City of Hollister rather than Monterey, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, it's on the fourth line on Q one oh two point three, if we could just amend.
One oh two point three.
Yeah, Q one oh two point three roadway engineering on the fourth line, it says Monterey County Code, we just need to change that to Hollister Code.
Is that acceptable to you, sir? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item G one, reports from City Councilmembers regarding their committees. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report at this time.
Uh, Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been meeting with COG pretty frequently. We are in the process of getting a new executive director for the Council of Governments. The other thing is, they gave a pretty good explanation as to why the traffic occurred this last week. They had a number of complaints, Caltrans was there. I asked for the staff, I'm hoping they follow up on that, to post the video of the explanation. Just to summarize, there was a press release that went out stating that they were gonna have traffic down to one lane. Basically, what they had to do is grind down the old stripe and then do the repaving. Because of the weather, they could not do it at night because the paint wouldn't dry on time, so they had to do it during the highest commuter times. They gave a really good explanation. They did a really great job of getting back to everybody. I understand there was a lot of frustration from the public. And sometimes we don't get all of the information out to them, so I asked for them to please do a good job of releasing that information. That's all I got to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
That's a new report.
Councilmember Morales?
Our next business meeting will be December the eighth at six P M. here at City Hall.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report. We'll move to informational reports from City Council. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by apologizing if these things have been discussed. Some of you may know I've been out for the last two council meetings. I did tune in by YouTube, and I didn't hear anything, so it may be repetitive, but I would like a status report on the downtown monument sign that we were actually hoping to get erected by the one fifty celebration, and now we're three, three days away from Thanksgiving, so I'd like to know where we're at in that. I'd like to know where we're at in installing the additional evening lighting on the side streets in the downtown area. I'd like to know where we're at in hiring a community development director and airport manager or director, as well as a chief building official and a combination building inspector. I would like to support, I know that this did come up in a previous council meeting, I would like to support a review of amending Hollister Municipal Code sections ten, ten, zero, three, zero, C. and D five, ten dot twenty, eighty, ten dot forty, one hundred, and ten dot forty, one fifty. These all have to do with parking of boats, trailers, cars on private property, and one of them actually has to do with a public hearing when it, the ten forty, one hundred, in the current code, it talks about a public hearing. I, I really don't believe that that type of thing should be on, on, at a council meeting. I would like to see that removed and maybe another process put in place like a hearing officer, because it feels to me like it's a, it's a potential violation of the code, and I wouldn't like to see it politicized. I would recommend that until we can figure this out, I'd like to see a stay in the enforcement of code enforcement on all of these. I can say I've driven down two or three streets in my district, and I quit counting at fifteen, and I have to presume in this city, there's probably well over a thousand people in violation, and I understand in most cases, it's where it, the catalyst is a complaint, and it then morphs into more complaints. And, and to me, I think we can spend our time in different areas more effectively and efficiently, and probably use that resource more thoroughly. And so I would, I would encourage that we stay in the enforcement action until we have a thorough presentation by the police department and code enforcement. I have been reached out to on three separate occasions in the last week on people living in my district, and it seems like this is just gonna continue to snowball. And, and candidly, if it doesn't create a visual obstruction or a physical obstruction, I, I don't see a real problem in most cases, and I do think we need to prioritize where code enforcement is headed on, primarily on life safety and then blight-related issues. And so I would like to see us move forward. I do believe at the last council meeting, I believe it was at, at minimum, Councilmember Perez and Morales that brought this up as well, and so I just want to share that I'm on board and in line with that as well. I do want to thank the voters for overwhelmingly passing the term limits. It's been something I've been advocating for, for, for some time, and I, it's a non-issue, and so thank you for doing that. I do want to know what the next steps are to implement that rolling forward, and so I'd like to hear more about that when it's appropriate. I do also want to know where and when we begin work now, the, through the vote, it was also clear that this community strongly supports a motorcycle rally. And I know in the time I've been on council, we have often not started this conversation until February or March, and maybe even sometimes later. And so I think we need to get going on this ASAP so that we don't find ourselves in similar situations. And I know in some cases the council split three, two, two, three, but I think the voters have spoken, and even though it was just an advisory measure, I believe we've got our marching orders in regard to that. I would also like to get a, a status update on the general plan. I believe I've been on council just about two years, and, and so for me, that's a document that's critical to the development of our community. And I know we've spent considerable resources financially and staff, and so I'd like to kind of know when we can actually expect to see that. I do want to talk for a minute about LULAC. I won't get into details, but I've seen it all over the social media, and I will say unequivocally, one hundred percent, I support LULAC in San Benito County. They have done an amazing job in administering the Marty Richmond Scholarship Fund, and so I don't know what's going on, but I am a hundred percent behind LULAC, and, and their good works in this community for decades. And then finally, I do want to also say go Baelers, as I understand it, they're in a championship football game, and so congratulations on a great year, and let's bring it home, fellas. Mayor, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll go ahead and support everything that he's asking for, if he needs a second, for Councilmember Burns. I do want to go on the record as well as saying that I support LULAC a hundred percent. I think that the work that they've done in our community and across the entire nation is critical and vital to representation in a number of ways, and anything we can do to support them, I'm happy to do, so I'd like to make that public. In light of the recent tragic events that happened in Colorado Springs, I'd like to ask for this council to bring back as soon as possible. I'd like to get a second to ensure that whatever process we do to give our policemen the badges for, like, let's say, breast cancer awareness month, that we do the same thing with June for LGBTQ pride awareness month. I'd like to ensure that it's not just the design aspect, it's not just the, the rainbow one, but it's the new inclusive flag that's on the patch, and I, again, I'd like to have that as soon as possible. I do want to go on the record and say that I'm very proud of the progress that we've made since I've been here, but obviously, this is still a huge issue, and we should and could do more, and that's why I'm making this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perez?
Nothing to report. I do support everything that Tim was saying. Yeah.
Councilmember Morales?
I do just want to add that, if you can clarify, Mr. Miller, about the, that we're gonna have a special session to talk about the RVs, so if that's moving forward, or, or what we're gonna do with that. And then to the business meeting that I talked about, we are gonna be talking about the rally, and I believe we talked about having Police Department be there for the discussions as well. Is that, is that still accurate?
That is, sorry, that is accurate.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Just want to say I agree with Mr. Burns, and it's a shame to see a group like LULAC smeared again in public by individuals that seem hell-bent on spreading lies, rumors, attacking people with their false stories, narratives. And it, it's a shame, and we keep seeing this happen, and people knowingly creating fake social media accounts, different groups who kind of spread the false information that they can, very vindictive, very hateful, what we're seeing in this community. So I want to make sure, I too agree, I not always agree one hundred percent with LULAC, I can tell you, they have done some incredible work in our community, and it's just, it's a shame to see the same group of people continually smear others in the community with their, their group pages. And on that note, I want to make sure that we're progressing with collecting the attorney fees for the case that Elia Salinas and Irma Gonzalez lost to the city on the lies they were spreading about those here at the city, the thirty thousand dollars. I want to make sure that we're following up and understand that those are taxpayer dollars, and they, they belong back to the city, and the court was very clear, this is this false information being spread by people, the same people that are still doing it out there, so it's a shame. And so fortunate that we have citizens that want to destroy their groups in our community, so that's all I have. City Manager?
Yeah, I was gonna have the police chief talk about the RV real quick.
I'll jump ahead. That's on the agenda for the next council meeting. I'll report back to you, this RV ordinances and why some of the stuff is there, and maybe some changes. I think one of the main changes is looking at, everybody has a different size driveway, and maybe we can look at not just saying a certain size, but if it fits. And, and so that will be coming back to you at the next council meeting. and, and so that'll be coming back to you at the next council meeting.
Great.
Yeah, and I think I got all consensus on, on, on Councilmember Burns, the one was, uh, to bring back, uh, the police, uh, badges or patches during, uh, Pride Month, do a consensus on that one. And then for, um, just, for me, I wanna, uh, wish the citizens a happy Thanksgiving coming up, the, the council, and then especially the, the staff that I'm very thankful that I have, and, um, we couldn't get the jobs done around here without them, so, thank you, doll.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing to report, Mayor and Council?
City Clerk?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Chief?
Just the RV ordinances, that's all I was gonna talk about today, thank you.
Thank you, if we can adjourn tonight in memory of Gil Perez, Gil Perez is a, a local businessman that, um, I've known for years, he owned the Radio Shack here. Fascinating gentleman, one of the nicest people you could ever meet in our community, gave so much to our community, and really gonna miss him. He passed away recently, and just his family prayers to, to everyone, and, uh, we're gonna miss him. So if we can adjourn in memory of Mr. Perez tonight.
Okay, we still have H one, just wanna make sure.
H one, I thought we go, just go right through this.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Now, you, now you wanna call it out?
No, I just wanna make sure, no we had any questions, and we can move right on by if no we had any questions.
Hearing none.
Well, we, we have items on the agenda that were from last year, like the priority setting, um, are we waiting until?
We're, yeah, we're waiting for the new council, but, uh, the assistant city manager and myself are working on a schedule as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Bye. Happy Thanksgiving. Nice to see you.
Thank you, call, call my cell phone, I'm out the rest of the week, but call my cell phone. You don't. I see maps with boxes. This is the city's whole right of way, right? So what I, what I understand is this is a county, and this is city right of way? They get these little green two parts, one in the city, one in the, one in the county. Because, because otherwise I can't, I don't have the, I can't both of them. Sure, yeah, 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 he can, it would just be two separate parts. I'm telling, I'm telling you, but I don't have insurance, to be honest with you. But, but either way, it doesn't matter, so if you want to define this, what we ought to do is, you're sicuro. Sicuro is all this.